Remember, everybody to be on mute unless you're speaking. I'm getting ready to start the meeting. Council, if you're not on video and you intend to be, go ahead and put your video on. Oh, that includes me. All right, seeing that it's 6 o'clock, I call this meeting to order. Remember to speak, you need to unmute and to mute, to keep your phone, to keep it on mute if you're not speaking. Call this meeting to order. Does anyone object? Seeing none, I call the meeting to order. First up is the impact on financials during this crisis. Wait. Uh-oh. Can you all hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so Eric, who's giving this report?
Okay, Jay Venicki is gonna give the financial report.
Okay, thank you.
Jay, are you on? Jay, are you on the line?
He shows up on the other, on the, on the screen, but I can't hear him.
Oh, he just, he got booted off the system. He'll be back on in just a moment. If you want to go to the next item, we can come back to that. That's okay?
Sure. Cecil on the line? To present with this.
AM Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, please. Sharon has to read it. Never mind, I'm sorry. Sharon has to read it.
One moment, Mayor. A restatement and amendment of emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, under section 1.03 of the charter of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, declaring local emergency of the novel coronavirus today's 2019 global pandemic and for other purposes.
All right. And, Mayor and Council, what we have and was attached to the agenda tonight, it is basically the version of the ordinance as we passed in our prior meeting, and I'm not gonna go through everything again unless there's any questions on the preamble in section 1, 2, and 3. Nothing has changed in that. With section 4, there were two subparts that we wanted to go back and, and take a look at some of the language that was in there, and I think with some good suggestions from council, potentially improve on that. So what we presented to you with the package tonight was, again, another document that sort of showed a couple of proposed amendments. The first is, as we said in the previous meeting, if you chose to adopt a change tonight to the ordinance, we would request that you change the, the style or the header of the ordinance to the second restatement and amendment of the ordinance. And what that says is, we're gonna put it all in one place, but there are amendments in this from the last version. So the more substantive amendments, the first thing we've done in, in your, in your agenda packet, I think this was highlighted in yellow, at the beginning of section 4, we sort of create a, we create a situation where we acknowledge that the 4.1, 2, and 3 have already become effective as, as Friday at 9:00 PM. And if you chose to enact some additional sections, we've set it up for section 4.4 and 4.5, then you can have a separate start time for that. We've put in 12:01 AM Tuesday, March 24th, but that can be changed, and I'll just read it very quickly. It states, whereas section 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 of this section became effective as of 9:00 PM Friday, March 20, 2020, the mayor and council now further ordain that as of 12:01 AM Tuesday, March 24, 2020, sections 4.4 and 4.5 below shall become effective in full force and mandatory for all businesses subject to these requirements. So if you made some changes, we would ask that you adopt that and choose whatever start time you wanted to put in that space. So the two sections that we were asked to look at were basically 4.4, which was related to massage, manicure, hairstyling, or personal grooming services. And the point had been raised that we probably wouldn't want to keep medical doctors or licensed therapists from being able to do that service, which is a good point. And with some language that I think, that Councilman Lambert suggested after the meeting, we inserted a new 4.4B, which states, massage provided by medical doctors, chiropractors, or licensed physical therapists for medical purposes shall not be subject to the restrictions contained in this section 4.4. I think that gives the exemption that we talked about and, and narrows the scope of that down. With section 4.5, what we have done, and the point was, I think that some hotels had event space that we didn't necessarily want to close the entire facility, but exempt, address the event space. What we did is created a new section. So 4.5A remains the same. Due to the nature of events and potential closeness proximity of participants and enclosed nature of the events and event spaces, the same being in contravention to the public health, safety, and welfare due to the nature of this emergency, events, facilities, and event spaces capable of hosting gatherings of more than 10 persons shall discontinue business until this emergency declaration is terminated. A new subsection B was created. And what this section does is basically says, if you have an events facility that is ancillary to your business, it's not the primary function of your business, and your primary business is not required to close, then so long as you close the event space, you can continue the primary business. So let me read it. Section 4.5B states, for any business, number 1, maintaining as an event facility or event space as an ancillary use of its business. And 2, where the primary business is not otherwise prohibited from operating pursuant to this emergency declaration or other laws or regulations, such business shall not be subject to the closure restrictions contained in this section 4.5, so long as the event facility or event space is closed and not available for business. And I should just say, it should be an example of such business as a hotel with a ballroom or a restaurant with an event space. So, under that, if they close the event space, the primary business can keep working or moving forward in the event of a hotel. We don't have restrictions. A restaurant would have to work in conformity with our other rules at this time. Before the meeting, we had one additional suggestion that I thought I would put in, which was related to the massage, manicure, hairstyling, and personal grooming services. And the suggestion had been raised, if those businesses sell products and have products or offered in the course of their business, then, you know, is it okay if they allow, were allowed to continue those sales if they sell them basically for curbside pickup? And if you all chose to, if you chose to adopt that section, I have some proposed language which would state as follows. 4.4C, businesses which provide product or supplies for sale in the course of their business may continue to any, to offer any such items for sale via curbside takeaway at the establishment. Businesses continuing to operate for curbside and takeaway sales shall establish systems that ensure that patrons and employees and contractors of the business shall maintain at least six feet of personal distance between themselves as much as possible, given the physical constraints of the premises. Basically, if you sell products, you can still sell them for curbside pickup. The six-foot requirements are the same ones we put on the interior of restaurants. At this time, those are the only proposals that were received, and if you chose to adopt these, we could, we could amend those into the ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
All right, so I can see you all now as opposed to the phone calls. Just raise your hand if you have a question. None. All right, so Cecil, I have a question. The governor issued some guidance today on groups of 10 or more. Can we supersede what he said?
What I perceive is the governor's regulations, it didn't state in there he was preempting anyone. And, you know, there's a fundamental of the law that says we sort of can, that a lot of times the, the state or federal government might create a floor that we can't go below, but we could potentially go above that. If, you know, the statement had been there, had been a preemption, and then we would have a different situation. I think if we adopt more restrictive ordinances, especially with the discussions we've had that each jurisdiction is different, I think we would have the ability to move forward with those, with adopting a stricter ordinance. So since ours is stricter, I believe we would have that authority.
Okay. Um, so this is just a general statement. The feedback we're getting from the beauty industry is somewhat contradict, there's, there's more, there's some places that have asked us to close them. There are others that have obviously asked us not to. And I don't think the governor gave any guidance about the six feet, except that there were more than 10 people. Is that correct, Eric or somebody?
Right, what I, what I received from what the governor said, he said no more than 10 people unless they're six feet apart, is what I got out of the press conference. And then bars and nightclubs were closed.
Any questions or other discussion?
Lynn, not on the points we're bringing up, but I will be asking to make an emotion to add another section with another sentence.
Okay. And, all right.
Lynn, I have a question.
Okay.
So I understand with the 4.4C, but it being curbside pickup, what is the difference between somebody walking into a hair salon to pick up their shampoo and somebody walking into Walgreens? I mean, does it have to be curbside pickup, or could we just say where that's the only service business they're allowed to do?
Cecil?
You can do either one. This was presented to me as curbside pickup, which was acceptable. If y'all wanted to allow it to be an interior, to do sales from within the business, we could do that as well.
Lynn, Mayor, this suggestion came from a salon, and so I forwarded it on to Cecil, and he did the language. So this actually came from a salon owner.
But you don't care if we just have it be the same way you could do business at Walgreens? And I know he said he would do curbside delivery, but it doesn't matter, does it?
I, I don't believe so. No, he was just interested in selling his products.
Right. Go ahead, Stacy.
In looking at his email, he asked for either delivery or pickup. So I kind of think that we should afford them the same.
Right.
Allowance we would, you know, we're allowing to Walgreens.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
And I can revise that very simply if y'all chose for me to.
Yeah, I think that you can go ahead and take out the need for curbside delivery.
Okay. And if that's okay, what I'll do is I'll read it in right now, and I think this, this amendment works, and I will provide this information if you, or this language to Sharon afterwards if, if y'all decide to pass this. But it would state, 4.4C, businesses which provide products or supplies for sale in the course of their business may continue to offer any such items for sale. Period. Businesses continuing to operate takeaway sales shall establish systems that ensure patrons, employees, contractors of the business maintain at least six feet of personal distance between themselves as much as possible, given the physical constraints of the premises, which is the same we did for restaurants.
Okay. Joe, do you want to discuss what you want to add?
Yeah, sure. I'm gonna just share my screen real quick here. So basically, you know, if you can see, anybody can see where I'm scrolling down now. I'm in the DeKalb County order that came out today. Can you, you see my document? I'm open?
Yes, I can, I can see.
All right, so there's a bullet point here. It says, all employers and businesses which remain open for use by the public must take the necessary steps to restrict in-person contact and maintain a distance of six feet between individuals while in the establishment. And I would like to make a motion to add that to this section that would be a 4.6. And the amendment would be the, the verbiage precisely as DeKalb has issued. And in addition, at the end where it says, while in the establishment, I would also add "or on their property." So I'd like to make a motion, I make a motion to amend to item 4.6.
All right. Joe has made a motion. Is there a second?
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Sharon. He offered that in the form of an amendment or just a motion?
I think, I'm sorry, he made an amendment.
We don't have a motion yet.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so, does anybody have any questions for Joe before we go further down this road, or comments? Okay. We need a mo, if we're proceeding with this item, we need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Tom. So nice to be able to see everybody. Okay, and then, any further discussion? And, so, so Joe, I think now would be the time you make your amendment.
Okay, so I, I make them, I would like to make a motion to amend, to add what I've just discussed with the DeKalb County verbiage.
Okay, is there a second for Joe's amendment about the six feet?
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Who said that?
Uh, Tom.
Okay, moved by Joe, second by Tom. Any discussion on this? Uh, John?
Cecil, can you explain to us, we are in DeKalb County, are we not subject to their regulations and the ordinance, and which was passed already by them?
I'm going to say, I think we have, what I would look at between the two ordinances is look to what, what control the county has within our jurisdiction. For instance, Health Department rules, if they do rules related to Health Department, clearly those are gonna override. I think even by its own terms, the DeKalb County ordinance suggests that we adopt it and follow theirs. So even by its own terms, they're acknowledging that they're not asserting that it overrides us. And I think that we would look, Council, into the, the areas of control between the two jurisdictions, see, you know, is this my responsibility or their responsibility? Clearly, they would have jurisdiction over their responsibilities. They're not asserting that. If they asserted it, I think we'd have to do a deeper dive on it. But at this point, I would say, no.
John, in the press conference, I guess, and perhaps in the ordinance itself, they urge the cities to do the same things they're doing. He doesn't require it.
Okay, I missed any DeKalb meetings during the day. I saw the, I saw it come out, the DeKalb ordinance come out. I have not read it thoroughly.
That's fine.
So are we supposed to be, I guess, I would like to read it, vet it, completely understand what they have to say before we start piecemealing it. Should we be adopting theirs in whole? I mean, is that part of, no.
Less, to me, it's less, I'm sorry, to me, it's less, it's less to contain community spread than what we're trying to do.
Got it.
From having read it. And staff, Jay and Eric would concur with that.
And question for Joe, I mean, we have the six feet spread, the universal precautions that we're trying to get are universal. Everybody kind of knows those. How are we gonna enforce what you're trying to put into place? Or are you just trying to make a statement to remind everybody?
I think it's really twofold, you know, as well, just public education awareness, when they're walking into the grocery stores, we're keeping those open, that the merchants are really conscious about that. I know that everybody, we've got some different piecemeal of different stores of having different controls. So I was over at Georgetown, and I'm looking at the AT&T store, and they're only, they lock the door, and you've got to knock it out, knock on the door to come inside the AT&T store in Georgetown. So, you know, everybody has some different, different things going on. Just want to raise public awareness as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, we had a, a motion for the amendment in the second, so I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye for the amendment.
Aye.
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 Aye. Come on, have you raise your hands. Any oppose, signify by saying nay. Sharon, the motion passes unanimously. The amendment passes unanimously. Yes, unanimously. So we're back to the original item now amended. Does anybody have additional questions or comments? Jim?
Yes, I'd like to propose the amendment that, as read by the city attorney for 4.0, I believe it's 4.4C, that would allow these personal care businesses to, if they've got product to sell, they could sell them on the same basis as, you know, say, a drugstore. So I proposed that language as provided by the city attorney.
Jim made a motion. We need a second.
Second.
Second by Pam. Any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, I call the question. Just raise your hands if you're in favor of the amendment as proposed. Sharon, that passes unanimously. Okay, so we're now to the twice amended motion that's on the floor. Are there additional comments or questions or concerns? Seeing none, I call the question. Signify, signify your support by saying aye, if you're supporting the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously, Sharon. Any nays? I don't think so. The motion passions, passes unanimously. And I want to be clear that, though we have put some deadlines in here, at any time, we can come back together to make changes, correct, Eric?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Do we, so we're gonna go back to report some presentations, Sharon?
Yes, we will.
Jay, I think you're up.
I'm on. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay. Mayor, Council, Eric had asked Linda Neighbors, the Finance Director, and myself to do kind of a crash analysis over the city's finances over the past couple of days, to give Mayor and Council a brief at this meeting on the state of the finances of the city and things for discussion at later date. So this is kind of like a 101 on the steps that we'll need to take, but I want to go through some things that I sent to y'all earlier this weekend, but kind of want to go through them as a background part. The first thing to do is to understand that the city's budget is kind of separate budgets. The general fund budget is about 60% of it, and all the other budgets are smaller portions. And I'd like to hit those smaller ones first because we can kind of take them and table them to the side. Some of the smallest ones are the capital fund, the debt fund, and the grants fund. They speak mainly to themselves because the capital fund and the grants fund are paid for by separate sources. So in other words, when we talk about the general fund, it gives to the capital fund. So we'll talk about that during the general fund. Three funds you need to know about are all self-contained funds that cannot be used for other purposes. There's stormwater, there's SLOFT, and there's 911. All three of those are ones that we will have to actively manage as the year progresses, and I want to go through each in order. For stormwater, we expect that funding at the end of the year, and as I'll talk about a little bit later in more detail, there are some sources of revenue we expect a much higher-than-normal under collection. So in other words, if we usually collect about 96%, it will be lower. Trouble is, there is no model right now to, to know how that will happen. We're gonna have to actively manage stormwater projects and come back to you with kind of a triage list over handling maintenance first, handling things that are heavy infrastructure and projects are ongoing. The next one to talk about is SLOFT. Now, that's the Sales Tech-Based Capital Program. That's a program that we know will get hit immediately. We know with the lack of sales, the funding for that will start to decrease, and hopefully we'll see numbers that we can work with in the next probably two or three months. It will take that much lag time to do it. But most of that funding for SLOFT is dedicated to road repaving. So as we get less money, we will do less projects, and we'll have to come back to you if it gets into, into some of those smaller projects that are not related to that. The third one is 911 funding, and this is one of those where we're not sure how this will be impacted. The third one is 911 funding, and this is one of those where we're not sure how this will be impacted by this, but it's also one of those that's global, or not global, but on a statewide scale. So that's one that if any jurisdictions have problems, all of us will probably have the same one. Those are your smaller funds. Let me talk about one source of fund, one fund source that you just need to kind of think of as general fund. And that's the hotel motel tax, and to a lesser extent, the motor vehicle rental fund. Both of those are revenue sources that go to the general fund. So as we talk about the general fund, that's where that will hit. Now I want to turn to a little bit about general fund revenue. Now we're talking $25 million out of the roughly $40 million city budget. You have basically eight sources of revenue if you want to pool them together. There are real property taxes, there are franchise fees, insurance premium, business license, the aforementioned hotel motel, fines, building permit, and other. Your largest sources is real property. And again, that's one of those, uh, items that we'll know will have a higher under collection, but we won't receive it until the end of the year. Franchise fees and insurance premiums get paid later in the year. Business license bills are already being paid at this point. The occupational tax checks are coming in as we speak. And hotel motel is one that we received, I think, all of February's payments today. I think we've gotten all of them in for this, for the past month. Fines or court, court fines and the like, and building permits. What we did was, and we sent this to you over the weekend, was built a model that I cannot say is any type of scientific look at it. It's just a sensitivity analysis of saying how hard we could be affected. In general, we have about $25, $26 million worth of expected revenue from these eight sources of funding. There are two that we can expect a radical decrease in, and that would be hotel motel and also to a lesser extent, building permits. We think what's in the ground is still going to continue, but new building permits may not come up. Now, if we take that and build different sliding scale models, the, the, the most liberal of which would be a 5% decrease in all revenue sources and 15% in hotel motel and business permits, that would get us a 6% decrease in overall revenue. Again, that's the farthest liberal side up. The farthest conservative side right now would be a 25% decrease in each and every revenue source except for hotel motel and building permits, which we would put in that model at 75%. So in other words, the two months and then a little bit more trickle for the rest of the year. In that case, we get down to a, a 30% decrease or a $7 million decrease in the expected $25 million of revenue. Now, this may cause alarm, but this is also need to talk a little bit about fund now. The city has been very good about keeping four to six months reserve at all times, and we still haven't closed the 2019 books. But we expect to, when we're finished, close at just that six months or maybe even a hair above it. So now it needs to bring up, for this year, we would eat into that if the revenues decreased. So with no action on expenditures, we would decrease revenues and eat into that fund balance. So your, your current budget is about, hold on one second, looking at my notes in the dark. That's currently about $16 or $17 million of fund balance. We could, under these various scenarios, lower it anywhere between 12 to 9 million dollars, or lower to 12 to $9 million, which would still keep us solvent for 2021, okay? So for the immediate impact for 2020, it's, it's something that we can weather the brunt of a storm, again, based on the sensitivity. However, that doesn't bring up the one situation we need to discuss, and that's cash flows. Our cash flows basically go downhill throughout the year until we hit about the August timeframe, and then they ramp back up. So we spend, don't collect a lot, and then end up getting most of our revenue at the end of the year. That's why at the beginning of the year, we start with such a robust fund balance. So in that case, what we're doing is we're going to say that we on the department side, and I'll ask you this after we go through the expenditure explanation, are going to ask for a little bit of concurrence and guidance in how the departments are going to handle expenditures for the, the short term and for the rest of the year. Now talking a little bit about where did the general fund money get spent, and I want to kind of be, just kind of like a 101 on just the general fund budget. About 40% of it is the police department, about $9 million, and your next biggest ones are parks at about 13% or three and a half. Finance and administration is 3 million, but a part of that is the debt payments on City Hall and also operating facilities. Public works in general fund is about 10% or 2.7. Community development is about 7% or $2 million, and then IP is your next one at 6% or 1.6. All the other eight departments have budgets of under $600,000. So that kind of shows you where department-wise the general fund spending goes. However, that's not the entire picture. What I want to go down is the breakdown of it by types and categories. About 40% of the budget is spent on personal services and benefits. So that's going directly to the police officers and the department heads that are full-time staff employees. So that part of the budget is kind of locked into those that are currently on payroll, and again, lion's share of it is, is police officers and police staff. Now, the second biggest category is professional services, which is about 44 million or about maybe almost half the budget. Now this, and I've given y'all a breakdown separately on it, is half of that is professional services, and the total is about $5.5 million. Now let me explain a little bit about how that's spent. Those are the contracts between our private and public partnerships that we have with all the big departments who are running the, the departments under the guidance of, of the head of it, that's a city employee. And for instance, they kind of actively manage it. So I'll give a good example. Infomark is our financed administration part. They handle both, for instance, the front desk receptionist and they handle accounts payable. And in their model, they've moved it so that she is doing both of those aspects right now. So we're still getting bills paid, and we're still getting checks cut, and they're rearranging the workload. So that's been a very good, efficient model, but that's about half your professional services budget. The next biggest chunk of it is repair and maintenance, which goes down to streets, parks, and in general, just repair. Now those are all probably about a quarter of those professional services. Those are ones where we can expect some less maintenance in parks because they've been shut down. Uh, maintenance for the streets is infrastructure and still keeping everything moving, so that's not one that's there. Now let's get into the smaller ones. There's liability insurance, which is something that we have to pay. That's about 4% of the budget. Police licensing for their software and vehicle repair and maintenance is about, uh, about 3% of it. Communications efforts in this is about 3%. So there we get to about 80% of this $44 million pot. The other ones is where the current department head can very easily triage and stop spending in, for all practical purposes they have. And they are things like education and training, dues and fees, travel, printing, advertising, and rentals. All of those basically came to a standstill in this past week. So for those cases, we should be able to trim, if we can reduce those by 75%, meaning we've already spent for two months and handle the rest of the year. That could generate over $700,000 worth of savings. If the repair and maintenance categories could generate just 25%, that could generate somewhere around $900,000, which would get us to a million, a million two of reductions in expenditures. Now I need to talk about the third part categories, and that's supplies. And basically, that is mostly utilities, and there's very little wiggle room. There's maybe a quarter million or so that we can actually touch in there, but it's, it's small supplies. And given the things where we're having to repair things unexpected, that's one where there's not much room for it. But in general, if we take actives, if we take active measures right now, the 1, 2, 1, 3 would give us a 5% reduction in expenditures almost guaranteed throughout the year along with, uh, a deeper dive in the next month or so, once things settle down. And that, even with a loss of revenue, so if we did 1.3 million worth of expenditure controls and lost 7.7 million of revenue, we would still end with 4.8 months of fund balance at the end of the year, which gives us stability in the next year. So, uh, kind of what we're asking is guidance and concurrence from, from Mayor and Council to allow City Manager and myself and the department heads to actively manage their budgets, to reduce expenditures where not needed, and to also come back to you regularly to say what services, right now, no services should be cut, just some reduced, and then actively manage it for cash flow and come back to you in a month or so, once that comes in. And that's kind of a, I hate to say it, a very quick crash course, but just wanted to give y'all an update and open up questions.
And Jay, Lynn, before you go to, to questions, I will say that I concur with Jay's report. He and I went over it thoroughly this weekend, and also Linda Neighbors, our Finance Director, is on the phone as well, if we need any, any questions from her.
Okay, um, I imagine there are questions, so perhaps I'll start with John.
I guess I'm just worried about the whole cash flow aspect of it and where we're at, and what major projects, if any, are we going to be thinking of cutting or screeing back? Is there anything, Jay, as far as major projects that, um, could be taken into consideration or?
That's the next steps that we're working with department heads on. Two different pots of money to look at. One for cash flow would be SLOST. And SLOST, we expect to radically come to a grinding halt, and we're going to look at the rollover fund balance and see what we can do. We're going to have to come back to council and say, here's a new estimate, and here are new project things. Again, the lion's share of that is paving. On the general fund, uh, Ms. Neighbors and I have gone over this quite a few times, and we do know that our low point is August and September, which means that every time a month closes, when March closes, when April closes, we're going to be going back and seeing what our cash balance is. We, we are pretty sure that we can work through this year. However, I do not want to take off the table the idea that we may have to do a tax anticipation notice later on in the year, be the first time we've done one, just in case we need to have cash at that point.
And when is our paving contract scheduled to be put on the street?
That's currently, uh, they're paving now.
All right, so the next one would be up when, as far as, it would be a year from now, it would be seven, eight months from now?
Right. Typically, what we do is we put the paving contract out at the end of the year and, uh, for an anticipation of an award either in December or January.
Okay, and the money that we've, we have money allocated then for the current budget, for the current paving in the SLOST right now. So that's, we've already signed the contract, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, John, that is correct. The, um, and that's in the, in the current SLOST budget. There are also some other functions in the SLOST budget as well, and that's something we're going to come through more this week to get a, um, to understand exactly where we, where we are. Because Jay's correct, the first thing that's going to drop, although it has a delayed effect, is going to be sales tax.
Right.
All right, to let you know, some of the other things in there are like police replacement vehicles and a few other smaller transportation-related capital efforts. Also on the, the SLOST, even if we were in a good year, let's just say there was just a small recession and we earned a little bit less. Once the books close for 19, we'll have a better idea of the rollover amount to make up for that shortfall, but we'll come back to you as soon as we have better numbers.
Great, thank you.
Tom? Do you have anything?
Uh, nothing specific at this time, just Jay, as you'd said, um, obviously, uh, you and staff will be working closely on this and keeping a close eye on it and, and updating, uh, the budgets as necessary. And my only ask, as you mentioned, is just to keep a surprise of any changes, uh, that come, come through that process.
Definitely will do.
Pam?
Um, again, kind of in mind with what John asked, um, about intersection projects. Are there any in that category?
There are, and this is one that I want to sit down with Michael Smith in Public Works to make sure that he and I are on the same page. Because right now, a lot of them are just labels in, in, in mind. I don't have enough experience on it. So I'm going to sit down with him, talking about as we determine how much less funding, what we would come back with, and what we could actually reduce.
Jim? Pam, was that all? Yeah. Okay, Jim?
No, I like what I'm hearing, and, you know, I just asked that you, you know, keep, keep heading in that direction and maybe, you know, give us a little more granularity, you know, a little bit more on paper, you know, as, as appropriate, you know, and I know that this is all happening fast and understand why we don't have it on this go around.
Somebody just walked on, Stacy. Hey Stacy, you, next.
Um, just a quick question. Jay, when will we know the rollover from 2019 for SLOST?
Actually, between, between stuff Linda has texted me, and again, it could be three to four million. And again, these are, we're working off of texting back and forth at everybody's kitchen table at the moment. So that's a ballpark. We're pretty close to finishing 2019. Uh, for instance, the $16 million reserve that we've mentioned earlier, I'm pretty comfortable with that using it as a discussion point. And 3 million or 4 million of rollover SLOST would be possible.
Okay, so the rollover SLOST can then just go into our 2020 SLOST fund with the paving and what we already have budgeted, correct?
Exceptions would be if we have projects that we did not finish from, so in other words, we've got to look at why we have the rollover too. So for instance, if something came in 100,000 over, yeah, it can be, it can be worked on, but if it's something where it just wasn't finished, we're going to spend it in the next year.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I, I sent an email out this afternoon. I know, I appreciate this is an initial conversation, and we're just at the initial phases of this. We have to, you know, develop the situation, get more information, but I would say everything should be on the table. Um, conservative, looking at a very conservative revenue, especially focused on where business is coming from. But I would like to see a walkthrough of all of our current city contracts. Everything should be on the table. Put a hold on all discretionary expenditures, look at our SLOST and say, you know what, even though it was, we signed a contract, um, you know what, this is, uh, terms and conditions and contracts are always subject to negotiation even midstream. So even those that we are, uh, receiving goods and services for presently, I'd like to open that up though, because, you know, if we had knew, not known our SLOST was going to be such a tight, tight fit that potentially look at that spreading out over two years, and would we do the same thing today, this year, if it was going to be over 24 months? So I'd be, I'd love to see that, how we can renegotiate potential contracts out there. Hold off on discretionary expenditures like the website review and so on. Um, then obviously looking at staffing, payroll expenses, the difference between personal on, in onsite or remote of those roles and, and so on. And just, I really want to be very, very conservative in our revenue streams and, and income here, so I appreciate the initial conversation. Um, thank you.
Me. Um, so I appreciate this. I think what you're looking for from us for tonight is an agreement that y'all do your job in terms of discretionary spending, come up with a plan. Is that correct, Eric? That's what you're looking for, right?
Right, right. That's, that's correct. And, you know, everything is, it is moving at a rapid pace. And so what we want to do is, and each, each incident's different, you know, the, the Great Recession had one effect where we had to cut budgets during those periods of time. Between Jay and I, we have a very seasoned staff to come up with a very good recommendation, um, for y'all, but we wanted to give you a snapshot of where we are right now.
Okay. Uh, so I think what I heard is, is that everybody's okay with that plan. And so proceed, uh, proceed, and hopefully, perhaps this won't be as devastating as it feels like today. So, uh, but plan as though it will be, please. All right, so.
Then I have a question.
Oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
Yeah, by all means. Jay, um, there was no attachment in today's meeting, no update, no, no documentation. There was a email or document you sent from March 21st, which gave, uh, some highlights. Is that the same document, has it been updated since? Are we allowed to share that now that this, uh?
Public, public knowledge. I mean, it was public the second I, I, we wrote it, so it's fine.
Right. No, I appreciate that. I didn't release it or I didn't push it out because I wasn't sure if there was an update. So what you, there's no update to that document then?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Um, anybody else have anything else?
Final comment. Sharon, if you can publish that document to the website as, as part of the agenda, it would be appreciated, just for general reference.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we can move to the discussion item. Sharon, do you want me just to talk about it? Or do you want to read them?
Your pleasure, Mayor.
Okay, so the first suggested topic was, um, how can we help local businesses in the short term during this emergency? I don't, um, Eric or Jay, or do you want me to start? You know, my concern is, is, uh, the question's been raised to us about business licenses, and I know there's multiple strategies with them. Eric, do you want to share your thoughts, please?
Sure, and we also have Linda on the phone as well as Michael Starling. I had asked Michael Starling to look at, um, some of the small businesses, things could be done, and I'd like to, if it's okay with you, I'd like to hear from him. And then we can go into, uh, have Linda address a little bit about how it works for the, for the occupational tax.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, do you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, um, so obviously, it, it's a very fluid situation right now, and everyone is looking to the federal stimulus sort of as direction. and everyone is looking to the federal stimulus sort of as direction on what will be available. Until that's complete, we're sort of flying blind here about what small businesses can expect. We have been talking to a lot of the property owners and some of them are proactively reaching out to retailers offering delayed rent or some kind of reduction in rent. We haven't heard back from everybody. That's what we've heard from most small businesses right now. They, they know that next month, that rent check is due and that's what they're very concerned about. But even those decisions, I think a lot of that will be dictated by what the federal stimulus is going to provide or not provide. Obviously, they're very concerned. Not all retailers are hurting. Some are actually thriving, especially larger grocery store chains, Amazon. I will also say that our, our partners, Discover Dunwoody, the Chamber of Commerce have, have, have really jumped in and provided information and data, especially about restaurants, on what they're doing. And so we're thrilled about that and we are sharing that information. But I would say until the federal stimulus is known, we, we have very little to share with them right now. I have not heard from anybody who's really concerned about their business license as much as they're concerned about their next rent check or their next two or three rent checks.
Okay, and Mayor?
Update, anything else you wanted to add?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. All right. Do you want to go to Linda, Eric? Eric, what's your plan?
Yes, that'd be great. Linda, you're still on the line. If you can address about the occupational tax and kind of where we are so far. Linda, you may have to unmute your, your phone to answer. Okay, while we're waiting on her, Jay, I know you've had, you and I have talked about it in detail. You want to go over what Linda, what we've reported?
Yeah, and I'll defer to Ms. Neighbors as soon as she comes on because she's much more into, into the details of it than I am. But we've received a great deal of our occupational tax. They're coming in daily to City Hall. And we do, I do expect under collections and nonpayments this year, in a much higher than usual. I think in general, those that have the ability to pay will pay and those that can't will, will not. I mean, it's kind of, I hate to say it's very much a black and white situation, but those that can't, that's probably one of the things that they just won't. But they may come back at a later date if their business survives and be able to pay at that. And in that case, Mayor and Council may want to revisit penalties and interest on that and use that as kind of the grace for the city to say, we understand that you can't operate this way this year, but it doesn't necessarily hamper for, doesn't do a forgiveness and doesn't delay the payment for those that can pay on time.
Anybody have any questions about that? And I think, Linda, are you on the phone? Because I see icon.
I, I think she was having trouble getting it to unmute, but she, she was texting me. She, let's give her just, just a second to see if she's back on.
Okay. While we're waiting, should, does anybody have any questions for Jay on that particular item? Or a difference of opinion, if you have a different strategy you'd like to see us engage in with occupational taxes? Okay, seeing none, I think that's your?
Oh, hold on. I see Jay's lips moving, but he was, was he talking to us?
No, I'm trying to tell Ginger that if she goes to number 5996, that's Linda Neighbors' phone. So unmute that phone.
She was on.
Now we turn to Jay. Okay. Well, I think the question at hand, which is, is what we wanted to do about these taxes, correct? And does anybody feel differently than what Jay suggested? All right, so I don't see anybody saying anything, so I think that's the consent you're looking for, correct? Eric?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. I just would like to see it in writing as far as when is, what's the methodology? When is it going to work and how is it going to work? And I'd like to see a little bit more detailed spelled out. Rather than that, I'm okay with the philosophy of it.
I, I see, okay. I think Linda's trying to talk because I can see it on my screen, but I'm not hearing anything.
She should be unmuted at this point. She should be unmuted at this point.
Technology is not always our friend.
Yeah, give her just a second. I, I do see her nail on the screen. Let's see if she can chime in.
There's a little microphone with a mute, Linda. If you see that, you have to click on that.
Hello, did I make it in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's terrible, okay.
That's okay.
Um, yes, we have received, I would say, about 11% of our business taxes for the year. And the bulk usually comes in, we usually receive, back to what Jay was talking about, the cash flow. We usually receive about $2 million in business license taxes. And we have gotten, or we've been inundated, I should say, with questions on whether we would allow an extension. Now, I personally, of course, cannot do that. It's written in the ordinances of the deadlines and when they're due. So that would have to be a council legislative action for that to take place. So I do know that the state did just extend their income tax deadline to line up with the federal. And I don't know, I don't think that we would want to go that far out and maybe we could readdress it when we got a little, you know, further down the line. But they have come in, but I know that the people are going to start needing that for cash flow purposes. So I just wanted to bring that up because we have really gotten inundated from the businesses on that question.
So is it possible, Jay or Linda or Eric, to communicate that while we're not moving the deadline, we are removing the penalty? Or do not, I'm saying this at a public meeting, or is that not the strategy that, that you're comfortable with? Are you more comfortable with us removing the penalty for being late? Or, because I think we are, we need to do something, given the critical situation. That's my opinion, I'm one of seven. But, but how do we let the business community know?
I would say the, what we would do at this point would be posted on our website because I don't know that we would have the ability to communicate through email or phone, something different than that. So I would recommend us doing it on our website.
Jay, did you have, is that what you would agree with?
I would agree and we need to look in the administrative procedures for the ability to waive the penalties and interest. Again, you're talking people that if they can't afford to pay, they just won't pay. But then at least after the deadline, they know they're not going to get charged any more than what they've already been charged and it, and it can sit out there. What it does is we do have some businesses in town that will be able to pay and extending the deadline, extend their payments too. So for us, it's still, if, if, if we're not going to get it on March 31st, then we're not going to get it on March 31st. Waiving the penalties and interest is probably the best thing that could be there. And again, I have to check if it's a mayor, council or administrative power, but we can work on getting that back to you and we'll have the, the info back to you by tomorrow, at least on which way it has to happen.
Okay. Anybody have any, I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
I would just say, I agree with that, that strategy. I mean, at the end of the day, a lot of businesses aren't going to pay and we certainly don't want to add tack on penalties or anything associated with that. But, but I agree with that strategy. And if y'all would like, we can also look at another date. It's just, that's your decision.
Okay, well, y'all will research the decision-making process and whether it can be administrative or approval. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, okay. Any other questions on small business impact? Large business impact that you want to ask staff while we have them here? Nope, okay. The next discussion item was helping, and I'm going to modify it a tiny bit about just helping nonprofits in general. The, I don't know who suggested the topic, so if someone wants to claim it about helping the poor, I guess, is what it says during this emergency. Okay, we need to mute. And and so, does someone want to talk about some strategies with the nonprofits that helped the poor that they had in mind? Okay. I know that Sandy Springs made a substantial contribution to the Community Action Center at their last meeting, a Community Assistance Center, sorry. And, but they already give them $100,000 or so a year. And we don't have that established relationship at this time with any nonprofit in terms of food security or other services. So I don't, I don't know that we have to make that decision today. And we can continue to discuss it in the future. If anyone has thoughts about it, you can share them. We will be meeting again for sure. And then, as most of you have, if you've checked your city email today, you have seen a lot of pleas for assistance to our cultural arts nonprofit. One in particular, but we have had other emails for, at least one other email for another one. And I know their ask was to forgive the rent the rest of the year, but in an optimistic way, we don't know what the rest of the year holds yet. I'm a little more pessimistic than I was a few hours ago. But would anybody like to talk about rent and our nonprofits? An informal discussion to give staff some guidance? Or perhaps give me some guidance? Go ahead, John.
Well, again, we have a lot, number of nonprofit organizations that serve the community. And I think this needs to be a comprehensive review of the expenses and the benefits to, you know, this decision. I'd like the staff to weigh this and look at this and give us some numbers and some options, but we're just, just slowly getting into our own budget items and starting to review the impacts of this. And I understand if they have rent payments coming due, we can definitely suspend for a couple of months or at least delay the rent, you know, immediately. We can delay it immediately, but we can make hard decisions as far as cutting after we get the staff review and the numbers of both what they owe and the impacts of each organization and the, how it'll affect our budget.
Anyone else? So my, my instinct is to forgive April rent since nobody can be open. But, but I, you know, that's just my instinct. And then we get, once we do our deep dive, we can go from there. I don't know what everyone else thinks. If anyone is not okay with that, let me know.
I'm interested too on, do we have a savings for the city? Because we're not, you know, providing as many services and the parks are closed. How much does that save us versus the offset with forgiving rent? Kind of like you said, going into a deep, deeper dive.
Right. So remember that the parks are not closed. The buildings are closed and the playgrounds are closed at this point. So we're still maintaining, and we would, even if the parks closed, we would still have to do the maintenance. But Jay, do you have something to add to that or?
Yeah, that was part of, in the background that I was giving you, the, the professional services part. Part of it's the R and M for parks and the like. We do understand there will be some, like some of the programming that is planned for the parks, we will have in savings. Part of that is you've also got to look at, we've got to keep the city afloat, both short-term and long-term. So we've got to kind of look at that, kind of looking at both on that. I think the rent that we get from these smaller facilities is a smaller portion of our revenues that then, that will be material compared to the other things that will hit us. So it's one of those things we'll look at as we go through the year.
Any other thoughts?
Just, just in general, you know, just to let the general citizens know that, you know, we're, I'm not saying we're like Doraville where we relied on GM, but we've relied 70% of our funding from businesses for the city. And that we know that the average homeowner is paying about $30 a month to get these great goods and services. And with that income flow, we could not even pay for our current police force. Again, just to let the citizens know with the current cash flow that we only receive, if we're just looking at city property taxes from the residential, we could not maintain our current police force. So, you know, we'd like to do more services and so on, just to make sure that we know that, you know, yeah, Sandy Springs is contributing each year. We're going to get out of this together. But yeah, let's definitely look at where we have any, you know, where we, where we expand or contract with services and programming and where we could have an extra, a few dollars to help some of these nonprofits and, and the less fortunate. Thank you.
So just with a nod, I guess. My, like I said, my instinct is to go ahead and forgive April rent since we've closed them. Does anybody find that objectionable? Okay. Anybody else have any discussion items for tonight? Okay, city manager comments? Eric, you had unmuted, Eric.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Okay, I wanted to run down just an update from the departments. Our communications department can, can then use to send out information. And we have our special COVID-19 webpage for all social media platforms, including the app. The reaction on that so far has been, has been mostly positive on our, on our website there as far as the information we have on it. We, we also, within each department, we continue to work on our longer-term projects. And one thing we're working on there is the Economic Development webpage with a focus on the COVID-19 resources. And work on this continues, as I mentioned, because we're in a, in a fluid environment. The courts, the court clerks are still working on scanning and attaching the citations from previous encounters with the police. And we're accessible via email and also telephone calls. We're taking calls to answer any questions about their court dates. And when court operations resume or when we go back into, once we go back to City Hall, we don't know what date that's going to be, but when we do that, we'd like to postpone court for an additional week to give time to reset the cases from the previous week. Although we can operate at a high efficiency, not being in the office, it's not 100%. Public Works continue to work on the Tilly Mill in Andover with the grading curb on the north side of Andover. We also are working on reviewing the Spalding-Shamley-Dunwoody intersection project. And of course, some of this stuff, we're going to talk about as part of the budget as we move forward. Do these projects continue? But at the same rate, staff is working on these. We also have stormwater projects ongoing at Old Spring House Road, River Glen Circle, Center Drive, Monkey Way and Dunwoody Knoll. And the tree removal is completed for Dunwoody Knoll pipe replacement. We've also, and it was a comment that came up, we've also adjusted the traffic signal timing plan for the reduced traffic volume. Economic development, it's been a fair amount of their time on the coronavirus and you heard from Michael Starling tonight, how he's working with, to follow the stimulus package and when that's approved and how we can get the word out to our businesses. At the same rate, we're still working on the, with the public art program and also on the small business and any kind of, with SBA loans and things of that nature. Once that stuff, we'd like to have a little bit more on our website so businesses can have, not exactly know every detail about the, about the plan, but at least point people in the right direction with links. The police continue to work, the volume is down, which is The police continue to work, the volume is down, which is a good thing during this time, we're continuing to monitor in our skate park and the other facilities to make sure there aren't any crowds gathering at those facilities, our, we've also, all of our staff has been issued for the police, the appropriate PPE equipment, except for the disposable gowns, we're maintaining social distancing to the extent possible, and the police officers are following the best practices for that. We also heard from AMR and DeKalb Fire, and they've also issued suggested PPE equipment and are following the CDC guidelines, so our first responders, whether it's police, city police, or whether it's the county forces, are following those guidelines. Signs have been placed around all the parks, playground areas, and the skate park, advising of their closures, the rims have been removed from the basketball courts, and all public park restrooms have been locked. Community development, just to, some little facts here with that, over the past day, we've completed 30 building inspections, one plan review, code enforcement continues to respond to cases, we're functional there, and they've also performed actually 20 re-inspections and gone back out. Engineering has seven, reviewed seven residential permits in the I-Work system, erosion control completed six plan reviews, and also completed two erosion control inspections, the permitting technicians have processed six resubmittals, six new submittals, emailed out nine plan review documents, and processed payment and issued permits, six payments and issued six permits as well, and the plan reviewer is, is still working on plan review and, and working through emails and telephone calls. And I will say this, and I want to thank the council for the, us moving forward with the electronic plan review, because we moved to that, I guess, within the last year, where everything's online, and now it's come in, we can continue to operate because of that. Planning Department has also, there's still a few people interested in talking about solar panels, and so we're going through those kind of reviews as well, and they're, they're also doing, the main thing they're doing in planning is looking at a lot of our ordinances and application processes, and seeing what we can do to make those more brief and concise, and so those are ongoing, there's still some people needing zoning certification letters, and so we're, we're being productive on that as well. The finance, the State Department of Audits awarded the extension to June 30th deadline, which is a 90-day extension for our audit, payroll and retirement have all been done remotely, checks have been sent out through the mail and bank drafts to the vendors, in-year reports and work papers are being delivered remotely to the auditors, all seven of our hotels have paid their excise tax for February, and that's $395,681, so just short of $400,000 that we've received on that. The, our purchasing department is continuing to work on RFPs, they've gone out for our contractors, the, and the contractors we've heard from so far, we're excited to get those, you know, we'll, we'll look at the schedule as time goes on, but those are on the street. Dunwoody Park and Recreation signage installation is back in along with, or is out on the street, excuse me, along with athletic field lighting, and you know, if you remember, some of those are, are requirements that we had when we purchased and did the land swap with the school system to light the field, and those are, those are actually in and they're waiting review. The, we received one proposal for the road and stormwater maintenance and repair services, we're not happy, we just have received one, we're going to rebid that for more competition. And the last note I'll, I'll put on there, and we're putting this on our website, it may already be up, which is Census Operations has delayed and is revising their schedule as well, but that's the, that's the staff report, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a, but, I don't have a question, just like to make a comment, Eric, one of the items you said, I just want to point out on the electronic plan review, I actually spoke with a general contractor recently, who very much appreciates the fact that they're still, still able to move forward with submitting their plans and, and their work at this moment. A lot of our neighboring municipalities do not have that function available, so that's been a big benefit for us here in Dunwoody, so thank you to you and staff for having that and keeping, keeping business moving as far as that goes.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, Eric, I really sincerely appreciate that, that update, it's very detailed, and I appreciate everything that everybody's doing in this situation, thank you.
He's lots of thumbs up, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, the courts, we announced they were closed until the end of this week, or what, what was the date we closed until?
Right, we did, we originally said that the City Hall would be closed, of course, last week, and then this week, and, and that's something that I want to discuss with y'all, and we can discuss some of it now, but the way the response is going for, for the COVID-19, I'd like to extend that, I haven't set a date of what we think we should do, we can do it week by week, but basically.
Administrative decision?
It is, it is, I just want to just let y'all know, keep you in the loop on that, but, but the courts, so, so basically what I want to do there is just keep that closed, and whenever we do go back, we'll have a one-week delay on rescheduling the cases, right now everything's on hold for that department.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, council comments? John?
No, no comments, but thank you for all the staff, all the good work that you've done, I know it's difficult, but, but thank you.
Oh gosh, the screen moved. Joe, did you leave? No, you're right there, sorry.
No, no comments, great, I did-o, John, thank you, everybody.
Jim?
Again, thanks all to staff, I just wanted to comment for our, our businesses out there, it is with a heavy heart that we make these shutdowns, and, you know, we want to keep it as short as possible, but we do really feel the need to make, you know, to make the moves that we have made, I've personally been following this pretty closely for more than six weeks, as we had some west coast travel in early February, and, you know, when you look out at the world right now, what's happening in places like, you know, Italy, Spain, New York City, Seattle is, is, you know, we are making these moves to avoid getting to that state, and, you know, keep your social distancing, you know, let's beat this thing. Thanks.
Pam? Yes, real quick, just to thank our community for supporting our restaurants, I think it was a really good weekend for a lot of them, and it's not, let's not have that big weekend surge, let's keep it going all week long, and again, if we all band together, this could be shorter, yes, thank you.
Tom?
I have nothing at this time, just would urge everyone again to act responsibly and self-quarantine, and hopefully this will be a short run rather than a long one.
Stacy, and your dog?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Pam said about supporting our businesses and our restaurants, it's a good thing I was on mute because there was a robust argument going on in my house as to what takeout we should have tonight. I would also encourage, you know, and again, what Jim said, we did shut down some businesses, a lot of those businesses also have a supply of masks and gloves, I would suggest to them that perhaps you could find a place to donate them until you were able to use them, the Georgia Department of Health updates at noon and 7 o'clock, and I checked it, and unfortunately, we are now up to 26 deaths in the state of Georgia, so please take this seriously.
Thank you. First, I want to thank our staff for working diligently to keep us moving, as Tom pointed out, while we may not physically be present at City Hall, the work of the city is continuing, and we're grateful for everyone's efforts because this is an extraordinary situation. I want to thank our city council for being extremely supportive, and going through this process, I could not ask for a better group of people to work with, this has been incredibly difficult, this feels very much like the cities are on the front line, and perhaps without adequate support from above, but it is really important that we all do our part, and part of that is supporting our local restaurants and our businesses. Tomorrow, I saw, it's like a Hallmark holiday, I suppose, but it's National Takeout Dinner Day, and so if you haven't yet partaked, our Discover Dunwoody website, and I think our Chamber website have a great list of what restaurants are doing what during this time, and the mall, perimeter mall closed as of 17 minutes ago, closed temporarily as we all weather this together, so encourage those around you to keep their distance from each other as much as possible, the goal is to shorten the length of this part of the virus, and I appreciate our citizens' positivity during this, if you didn't see CNN today about the, our, our famous sign, make sure you look up that story, and I want to make two last comments, one, if you are able to support the two nonprofits that serve Dunwoody residents who are food insecure, the Community Assistance Center and Malachi Storehouse, you can go to both of their websites to make donations, and additionally, if you find that yourself or your family are in need of food or other assistance, please reach out to those two agencies, that is what they are here for. With that, I will.
Lynn? Real quick, right, I should have said this, and I apologize, but again, you know, kudos to the staff, and that's been said, but I also want to do a huge shout-out to our mayor, Lynn Doyce, amazing job, Lynn, I mean, we couldn't ask any more of you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second?
Second, Pam, moved by Jim Sharon, second by Pam, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. We oppose, seeing none, the meeting is adjourned, and thank you to the public for putting up with our small technology glitches, we'll get, we're getting better with each meeting. Thank you all, good night.
Good night.